So I'm gonna call the meeting to work. And we will start by standing for the pledge, please.
Let me just give a flag. The United States of America and the two republics, which states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We did not have a closed session, and so there's nothing to report. And our first thing we need to do is get the approval of the agenda. Give it just a second to pull it up.
One quick question while we're back is if we want to pull something out from the consent agenda, do we do that at this point?
We will do that. Yes, we can do that now, so.
And I do want to note that the letter we received does not relate to anything that's on the consent agenda.
Ah, okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification. And maybe we will cover that in public comments and.
All right, so we're gonna start by approving today's agenda. And there's nothing that you're gonna pull from that, Jack?
No, in that case, I.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience who has something they wanted to pull from the agenda?
You know, I'm sorry, I guess the item, if we call it the staff activity report, if that's discussed when it was relating in that email, but it was not, it's not a specific item on the agenda. It just falls under staff activity.
So is that grant report out front of the consent agenda then? Or staff activity report is separate?
Let's say staff activity report.
What's under staff activity? Could probably address the question a bit there without violation of our tools or the Brown Act or something. Like, we're not.
Yeah, we could do it that way, or we could talk about it under the consent and we could have it pulled, which would be agenda item one.
Let's do that. In the interest of the fact that we received the letter.
Okay, so you want to, we're gonna pull the staff activity report for a specific part of that and make that number one.
To approve the agenda with the pulling of that consent of the night.
I didn't see anybody in the audience saying anything else, so. Oh, second, that's second, okay, we got first and second. Would say all in favor? Okay, we got it, that passes. So that'll become number one. So the next thing we gotta do is approve, we got two sets of minutes to approve. So I, do we have start with the eight twenty-three twenty-two minutes? Was there anything for, was there anything you needed to add or ask about?
I will, I'm staying.
I'm staying. Jack, anything in the minutes you need to, no, I don't need to add. Was there anyone in the audience having eight twenty-two, eight twenty-three minutes? Yes, ma'am.
There's some point early on that gives opportunity.
If that will come up, if it comes up. Okay, I'm gonna bring, we get, we're almost there. So let's go back to minutes, and we're gonna go to the nine thirteen minutes. Anybody on the council? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Mostly characterizing my concern with the S T R to talk about last one. My suggestion was not that we get rid of all the regulations and everything. It was to say, look, we've really heard of it. Well, some of us may be lucky enough to be getting through this, a lot of people are hurting. So the nice solution, second from the council, was to dash back all five, send them the power of all of us. Dashboard all five as a special thing, not because it, so you corrected that, bring me with that, we appreciate it. And he had, he had Jennifer's comments too, which was why I'm concerned with it.
Thank you.
Some of the subject, you know.
Thank you. Gabe, you okay?
Okay.
Yeah, good, all right. Then the minutes from nine thirteen, there were no changes, okay? Anybody in the audience had any changes from the nine thirteen minutes? With that, sounds like we are ready to approve the motion.
That's from, well, can I move to approve for nine thirteen? I can't move for eight twenty-three. Do you want to just do?
Yeah, well, let's do nine thirteen, he's good enough to.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay. We will take, take a vote, we'll just do it verbally this time, and fine, okay, we have the nine thirteen minutes, we're gonna have to come back to the eight twenty-three next month, okay?
Sounds good. I guess we don't have one on.
That's right, that's okay, we can take care of that.
I see he was calling again.
He relayed to us that he's unable to because he's traveling between one location to the other.
Okay, so the next item are council reports, so Cheryl, do you have anything to report?
Not at this time, I attended the planning commission, but we discussed some of the same general plan elements that were discussed at the last council meeting, so I don't think there's anything to.
Jack, do you have any?
And I do not have any reports to add.
Okay, and I'm just gonna very quickly state that H God was met over the last month, and they're getting very little going on. Most of it is about, that we've heard about is the changes going on in our highway system. There's been very little change at this point, so there's not anything really to report. Hopefully, we'll find out more when H God meets next time. So I think we've got everything, so we're gonna be on the staff report, so Eli, it's your turn.
Okay, so the staff report is in the packet. The first item is the candidates and measure P form, which will be next Tuesday, October the eighteenth, seven P M. here at the town hall. The legal women voters will moderate, and the candidates forum will begin from seven till approximately eight P M., followed by the measure P form, which will be approximately eight P M. till approximately eight thirty. Anyone who wants to submit a question, it can be submitted to the league in advance at leighhumboldt@gmail.com, or it could be submitted at the event in person here. Otherwise, as far as the water system, the creek level was two point zero C F S, which is twice what we had last year, but we still encourage residents to conserve water. And Becky had prepared the project and grant report, which we can get into it when we get into the staff consent agenda item one, so. So anyway, it's about six pages that she has reporting on various grants. That's all I have.
Do you have any questions? We're gonna move on, this is for Paul, we're gonna move on to items on the floor, so if you have something you'd like to add, this is your time.
Yeah, I said everyone turns out to be a little bit outdated, so it's expanded to all the state agreements that Trinidad's by Thor organic set to increase housing. New grant, S B two, and including the roof. And the question is, can housing be increased when there is a moratorium on water? Question one to sit, and it's also put in public comments. I think are relevant to all of the grants that the city has applied to relative to increasing housing. The bottom line is that is the appearance that grant money is being used to supplement the cost of paperwork and stack busy work, that will have little or no effect on affordable housing. And that's explained more deeply in the more extensive letter than supposed to in the comments. As you all know, the city council repetitively voted to restrict the quantity of water available because there was a public outcry that wanted to limit any house. And that's part of the reason that the city chose the way it chose. So then it begs the question, why are we accepting these grants? When there's no possibility of increasing housing? No water hookups outside the city. And there's almost no land to develop in the city. Anyway, the letter I know is more extensive as far as questions, and the council or the city manager can answer those questions.
Would you like to respond?
Yeah, I could respond, I didn't know if we wanted to do it under consent agenda item one, since you already said that you're pulling it, right?
So you wanna get back to that consent agenda, number one? Okay, that will come up as my number one. Before I go on, I did forget to read something that I wanna make sure is read to everybody for our items on the floor. The members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda, so that may be, oh, actually appearing on the agenda, just we'll talk about it in a minute. Individual comments may be limited to three minutes or less, please direct your comments to the council as a whole. Maintain decorum and avoid personal attacks on staff, members of the council, and/or other members of the public. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. So anybody else have some item?
Yeah, those are all, you filed in the public comments, and we've all got this through your email already. I'd like to read again, and this is kind of a part really important to me, but I tried to address it back in August with the rebuttal through my argument against Cheryl, it decided to be not the book. And I moved, council was, and, because they had signed with the book that Mayor had with us. And there's two issue back there, there are flat out laws, and wanted to get it addressed before it got published, but nothing happened, so I'm addressing it tonight. And specifically, it's the characterization, this is a mischaracterization, on the website and in the rebuttal by this measure P, saying city sought to increase the D O T to twelve percent earlier in the year. No, we didn't seek to, it raised, that's what started reading, on a small process, and I put a lot of energy into it. And I thought hard for this, and that's why we had it all down. It's fine. I just wanna be completely honest, I don't want to be completely straightforward on this. The basis, January first, twelve percent. I said, you can't do that, you had to recede it to ten percent, I said, nope, you gotta take it all the way back to eight percent, because we did the same thing, I passed it by, it was a little bit old. So to me, it's like, well, sorry, thanks for helping out, let's make it right, not though we were considering it. You guys passed it, so I will just be straightforward about it, just honesty is always best, in my opinion. So then, that was one thing. The second was, and so personal, like we've actually said, the only side proponent reference, which is me, the proponent against attached, wanted it decreased. No, I didn't. I never wanted the tax decrease, that's what I thought, okay, I said, two times, that's not why you rescinded it, didn't do anything worse. No, I very correctly, we have the city of Trinidad, follow the state constitution, and submit increases to the law fair. That was it, so those are two things I really wanted to clarify, they wanted to get published, they gotta publish. Clarify those, like, and that's hence the me, like, there's no reason for us to do misinformation on this issue. Straightforward, you may be saying, you know what we're doing, we know, we're doing now, we fix it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more items from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
And actually, before we get to consent, I was just informed that Lieutenant Josh McCall is on the call. So we can turn it over and see if he's available to make some comments regarding the consent activity report.
We have. Are you there, Josh?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so nothing, nothing too significant, I do have the stats for the city and obviously surrounding area that.
Lieutenant McCall, may I interrupt a second?
Yes.
We are pretty weak, we can barely hear you, you think you could speak a little louder? I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me a little bit better now?
No, we can't, they can't hear you out in the audience. Gabe's gonna work on it real quick, see if we can get you a little louder before we go on, so hold on just a second.
All right. I think it might just be his, whatever he's using. Let's try this.
Go ahead, go ahead and try again.
Any better?
Much better. Can you hear everybody?
Yeah, sorry, I had to zoom in from my phone tonight, because I had another, another commitment that I was trying to balance here, so I apologize for that, usually I'll try and do it from my computer if I have to zoom in, but alls I, alls I have is the, the stats that were provided for the, you know, the city, and then the encompassing outline area that, that falls under what we would generally refer to as Trinidad, even though it's, some of this does fall outside the city limits. Stats for September, we're down from August as far as calls for service by about ten percent. And corresponding to that, the reports and arrests and such were down. We had fifteen reports taken for the Trinidad area for the month of September. One arrest, four felony investigations, and six misdemeanor investigations. With that, was also kind of a reduction in the various calls for service of types. We had one assault, one either burglary from either a vehicle or a building, two general thefts, eight general disturbances, and one public intoxication. And then a handful of alarm calls, patrol checks, suspicious vehicles, and person type, type calls were all pretty much single, single-digit numbers for the, the month of September, so all in all, pretty much every, every type of call for service and type of incident was for the most part down from the previous month.
Thank you, that's, that's great news, and we appreciate you being here, are there any questions from the council?
Yes, this is Cheryl, I just have a quick question. The area by the library and the community park has become a bit of a hotspot, and we have strategized about additional coverage, and Eli, our city manager, has been, you know, working with me on that. I'm just wondering if you're seeing, you know, if you're doing extra patrols there, or you're seeing challenges there, just, you know, what you can share with us.
I'm not aware of anything specific to those areas, but hey, I can definitely check in with the city manager, city clerk, and get more specifics on that, and, you know, if we have specific, especially specific issues occurring in those areas, we can definitely pass that along to our, our patrol staff, so that they, they know to kind of maybe pay some special attention to, to anything going on in those areas.
Yeah, we've had quite a few challenges there, so that would be great, if we can coordinate on that.
Oh, we have someone. I'll be, you notice anything improving, or is it getting worse?
It's worse. The gentleman that was evicted from hitting proof lived in the gazebo for several weeks with his, all of his possessions in the gazebo, and last week in front of the museum, people continued to sleep in the museum, you know, we removed all the beds, just not in the museum, on the museum porch. And with the cardboard boxes and beer cans, lots of cigarettes, and some ladies clothing was on Saturday, this right before the vision and seats. It's consistently a problem of people sleeping on the museum porch and leaving belongings and beverage cans and bottles.
Thank you.
Lieutenant McCall, just for your information, Patty happens to be the museum director, so she's there all the time, for at least half of the week, she's there.
Okay.
Anything else? Oh, one more person. Mike Morgan.
Mike Morgan, it's our current update, the American candidate for council. While we have, we shared, Eli spoke to already, power of the horrible hacker in the head of the movie. And getting up to the cross, we had a very shocking thing happen. There was a complete wall, I guess like a widget circle, whatever you call it, with sinking widgets, and a big swash of dead in the front, in front of us. And about twelve dozen of these sort of gigantic symbols, we must call them. So of course, that had gotten all off, but it's something shocking in the community, I thought, I eat, lots of movies. All kinds of people went through, went down, that I've never seen since I've been here for seventeen years, or anything like that, that blazes, and the community should be aware of it, of course, I went to, I didn't mind looking for it, so.
Okay, we got some information for you, hopefully you can help us out in some way.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
So we're back to consent agenda, and we have two items, number two and three, the financial statements and the law enforcement report, which actually was just covered, so would somebody like to reserve a comment on, we're very busy, so why not go ahead? We need to, someone needs to make a motion to do something with it.
Yeah, I want to move to approve the consent agenda, right?
We got first and a second, Gabe, why don't you go ahead, we'll do, we'll call this.
So, yes, sir, council member Tullow first and seconded by Kelly, is that right?
Correct.
You got the consent agenda as submitted? Council member Kelly?
Wes? Yes.
And Tullow?
Yes.
Okay, so we still wanted to address the staff activity report. Okay, so we actually have the items two and three approved.
That was all, yes.
We're aggressive. I don't have the one. Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
So, just to revise that, just proof consent agenda items.
Two and three.
Three, thank you very much. Okay, so regarding the staff activity report, I don't know, we have Becky online. Let's see if she's on there.
No.
Okay, she's not, okay, because I can't see the whole list.
That's right.
Yeah, so, so anyway, Becky, who was our grants administrator, had written the staff report portion regarding grants, so specifically Paula Levine was asking about any grants that are related to housing. So what we so number one, we don't have a moratorium on the water hookups, so I just wanted to make that clear. We take it on an as-needed basis, we certainly had addressed it before with the request from the rancher area regarding the hotel, but because of the size of the hotel, that we were unable to commit to. But if it is a couple homes here and there, we can consider those. As far as the housing, this is a planning grant, at least one of them, that's referred to. And the reason that we have to go through that process, number one, it's for our community, it's part of the planning process, but number two, the state requires that every city address their particular housing needs, and the state also requires that cities put in a certain amount of house. So, so we have to fulfill that requirement, and, and we do the study, and then we determine, you know, how much we can actually handle in our city with the size of it, and we would have to report that to the state. In the meantime, as was noted regarding water, so if we are unable to provide water to a house, then that would be taken into consideration. So that would justify our response to the state, and we could not fulfill whatever requirement they would want from us, because we could at that point be short of water, because water is one of the essential things that needs to be provided. But other than that, the grants themselves, number one, address the housing element that's part of the general plan. It also addresses the housing needs of the city, and it also addresses the state requirement of every city to, to address housing and what that city can do. And the state actually generally identifies a certain amount of housing units that they would like every city to, to increase by, because there is definitely housing shortage statewide. Hopefully that answers your questions.
Eli, do you know much about the general plan and the A D U policy that will be adopted?
Yeah, yeah, well, the A D O, you know, the A D U policy that the state requires is that, you know, with every housing unit that have an accessory dwelling unit. And of course, you have to go by the square footage of that particular block, whether or not you can have that. But that, that also would be part of the process that would be addressed. And then Cheryl was on the planning commission for a number of years, so like, you might want to add to all of that regarding housing and so on?
Actually, just gonna comment. I hit the nail on the head, that the part of the planning was to address the state law that passed that all cities had to have a certain number accessory dwelling units, and trying to understand what that inventory would look like in Trinidad, where it would be allowed, or it wouldn't be. It was factored into water planning, so if you look at the water capacity plan, that included a certain amount of A D U's, it wouldn't be a lot in Trinidad, because we, you know, to Paula's point, we don't have a lot of land. But just doing that assessment and looking at the zoning and the different properties, and then I think there was also a discussion in the planning commission about whether or not, you know, you, well, we looked at all the different kind of building requirements, and so there's a cost associated with that for staff time and working with the planning commission on kind of what those parameters should be for an A D U in a town our size. And so I think there was, there's a cost associated with some of that planning, so there are some things going on, and there are some filled out, a small amount that can be. I just considered low income housing.
But the state specifically, yes, they would like to see affordable housing, but even beyond that, they, they want the A D U's, and they also want a certain amount of housing for every city. That's what they request, so as a result, we have to respond to that request. And generally, a lot of the things that were mentioned here would apply, meaning number one, we got limited available space other than if it's added to existing parcels. And number two, we have water limitations, which at a certain point, we wouldn't be able to provide for possibly all the housing need that the state might ask us to.
This is fully responsible, we do have a grant for you, and you know, that's in the staff activity report, I think, you know, at some point, that could be even a sub. you know, at some point, that could be even a separate topic. It's just sort of how we look at, you know, it's wonderful that we get all these grant opportunities. In fact, he's done a phenomenal job. And just, you know, kind of looking at each one of those and are we spending them any wisely, you know, just because, you know, we're lucky or fortunate. Not luck, actually, because you work hard, but, you know, looking at, you know, making sure that we are being physically responsible. So I need to figure out, you know, what's
Hopefully we answered your questions.
Actually, we still have some, we have some comments if anybody in the community would like to make a comment. Go ahead, Paul, if you'd like, Paul, go. Yes, please. So we get recorded, yes.
Just seems like a lot money. And given that there's such a restriction to that's capacity to possibly the world, the person doing it states, wouldn't it make more sense to just communicate with the state, explain the situation and ask for a what's the limit of such a Thank you. As for a variant, say, with our limited water, we deal with a lot of water issues. We are the tiniest city in California. It just don't have the capacity to 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 add the kind of housing that that the state wants us to add. So we don't really just question, I mean, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here. And I just wonder exactly where it's going. I understand conceptually, you know, there's planning and what, but the planning commission, it's not okay to, is it a paid position with the planning commission? What's the question? The planning commission is not a paid
No, no, but the staff it pays a big time. It's the, it's the staff that works with the planning. And I, I should say that I was referring to just the lead part of the grant. So I wanted to type that as we do when I was talking.
So I guess I would need more specifics to really answer the question.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Michael, we had me and Lee, former county took me in the head for planning commission chairman, same path. Cheryl Kelly's paper, it's a good one. The military started to use them. I wanted to have the fire department have fired people in town, have motion happening problem with a great big space. Who you guys in here? Well, you can't do that. Why do you need to have an E D? What the hell is that? So I turned it to the V D U, so I guess there's, I mean, a call. However, I hear what she's saying. It's very frustrating to see and hear everything. Oh, Morgan's sitting on the website and stuff. No, that's not it. But these are best public housing specifically. The way I understood her mother, it should be, you know, some border miles. And American California law, it's a four to mine. And that's what we're lacking in. And we do kind of a lot of opportunities. She may not be aware of it. And then her degree is not aware. I never heard anything about this. You want A D U units? I could probably put one. You know, it just needs to be, it needs to be discussed with the community. And I'm afraid V D U's, A D U's are not too popular with a lot of our council. But they are a really good, easy way for us to expand to the house, serving families, the house students, the house, saving people who are losing their homes. We didn't help out. So I'd love to see you guys break play. That's when they need to hear it from around this issue. It's somebody just getting murdered. Say, hey, you've got to change a little bit the state's borders to change a little bit. You've got a space for this. Stop.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please.
Pretty major fall. This is you all. And I understand that it's important stuff coming to be a steady we all feel like especially my, they're able if you're going for our friends to be here, come here. So I understand the importance of this. I'm concerned not only with water, that might be but I'm concerned with wastewater sewer systems. And so when you do have that means we have a sewer system and fish lines and have another so in addition to water all those issues that affect us to be able to really stay looking for, we can't afford with two or houses or just ten more houses.
Is anybody else who has any comments about this? Eli, just quick, as we begin to go forward with these, with using this money for planning, it will start answering all these questions and these things will get out to the public, right?
Exactly. And there'd be an opportunity for the public to weigh in further. Specifically, the one that I see that is the LEAK grant, which in this description, it's 65,000. And this grant provides funding assistance to develop housing element policies and procedures that promote and accelerate housing production to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation. So that's where the state requires a certain regional housing needs allocation for each city. And those on the same grant will help the city meet state requirements to streamline the approval of housing, of affordable housing through development of policies, the design standards, plans, and incorporate those into the housing and zoning work. So, yeah, I mean, this is an important issue. It needs to be addressed. And as was commented, yes, the planning commission doesn't get paid, but our staff does. And we contract with S H N that provides our planning services. And as a result, between them and the rest of our staff, this grant will help pay the cost of addressing the questions that the state needs to answer and our community needs to answer.
So these are state requirements that we need to go through. I know H C O G does that are, is really in charge of transportation in Humboldt County, but they've taken on housing as well because it's become such an important issue. So we all need to do our part to try to make sure it's, we can do what we can within our own communities. A lot of that state planning is paperwork and a lot that we have to do. But and that's where the money's coming in so we can use it. So I think with that, was there, is that everything for the staff activity report now that you wanted to cover?
Yeah. And then at this point, you can, you know, have a motion.
That's what I'm going to do. Yeah, I'm sure you're finished. Sure. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the staff activity report? I make a motion to accept this staff activity report. Second amendment. Okay, good. Thank you. And Gate, could you give a count, please?
So council member Tuttle and Kelly made a motion to accept the staff activity report consent consent agenda item number one. Sorry, Kelly.
Don't tie.
And you're, Chris West.
Yes.
Passes through.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the discussion action items. And our first item is the unmet transit needs, public carrying. Eli, we have somebody to come in and talk about. So are you going to take?
Uh, Steve, Steve. Oh, he's signed. Okay.
Very good. He's on.
Yeah. So
Is Steve Luther?
Yes.
Are you there, Steve?
Hi there.
Great, thank you. Loud and clear.
All right, great. So this is the annual unmet transit needs hearing, the Humboldt, I'm Stevie Luther. I'm the associate regional planner with the Humboldt County Association of Governments. And this is a required hearing for the Transportation Development Act, which is a fund that goes towards public transit in the county. And annually, the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council will make a recommendation to the H C O G board on whether there are any unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. And that finding is required prior to releasing T D A funds for non-transit purposes such as streets and roads. So we're recommending that Trinidad open the public hearing and hear from the public. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. Thank you.
Any councillors have any questions for? No, and I know. So we're going to go to the public. Does anybody would like to make a comment about un-unmet transit needs? Does anybody have any suggestions for H C O G to make any types of changes or? Anybody? Doesn't look like we're getting a lot of reaction. So it looks like there's nothing for us to report at this time.
I guess I, I'm sorry, I do have a question now.
Oh, we do have one.
This is Cheryl. And does do you conduct any kind of surveys of later to end that needs? I guess my concern is that maybe, you know, me in this room right now might not know, but there may be things that people would like to to see.
Yeah, absolutely. To that point, we do have an online survey. And we also have flyers that are posted on the buses so that people that are riding transit can get access to that. So that's part of our our annual solicitation of public comment. And there are also known unmet transit needs in the county that we commonly get comments on. And many of those don't meet the adopted threshold to be determined reasonable to meet. But we do continue to analyze those unmet needs through our regular public transit planning processes.
Is there any way we can parse it for Trinidad or?
Can you repeat that, please?
Is there any way to parse the data for Trinidad? So to pull the the information for any, for any feedback from Trinidad residents?
Yeah, I would be happy to provide that to your council. Just off the top of my head, usually we hear that they'd like more routes from Trinidad or more frequent service to get from Trinidad to Eureka. And so that's one that we do hear a lot and it is a challenge to implement due to just the travel time and the number of drivers and the the costs associated.
This is Jack Tuttle, city council. I had the pleasure of actually going on my first bus ride on the, on the system about two weeks ago. I was picking up my brother Matt from the train depot down in Arcata. He was staying, he's, he's disabled and he was staying at the Patrick's Point and camping there for a few weeks or two weeks. What he noticed was there really wasn't a way for him to get to Patrick's Point from downtown Trinidad. Also, you know, wanted to also get down to the pier. Recommended to me to maybe have some type of shuttle to take people from the pier all the way to Patrick's Point and then kind of do a circle to help move people around this, this, the local city and to see all the different parts of the Trinidad area.
See, when you have this, the bus route goes from Trinidad to Fortuna, is that right?
Correct.
And so we don't even go past, you don't go past Trinidad at all?
No, the, the Redwood Transit System does not. There, there is a connection to the Del Norte County Transit System to get up to Crescent City. I believe that connects in Arcata.
So there's no, I mean, we, we would be responsible for putting in a system that would provide that kind of transportation within the city. Is that right?
For for points to such as Patrick's Point or like Big Lagoon Rancheria was another one that we got a request for last year. And yeah, there's no entity, you know, goes into county jurisdiction. And so the the funding mechanisms for starting up a new service like that are would definitely be challenging.
What would it take in numbers to be able to do that?
You know, I would definitely have to look at the numbers. I, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
I don't think you, is there anything else you'd wanted to ask?
Thank you.
Any community have a question?
And I do see a hand up by Richard Johnson. Online.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much. And thanks, Stevie, for being here tonight. My name is Richard Johnson and I'm a member of the S S TAC who oversees the unmet transit needs process for H C O G. And I just wanted to reemphasize what Stevie was saying. This, this is a process which we do every year and sometimes it looks very daunting and complicated. But it's extremely important that we get information from the public on what they want for unmet transit needs in the county. And many times it looks like there's no way that we can accommodate some of the requests. But as the requests become known, H C O G staff and the transit operators look at these very, very carefully. So I encourage everyone to ensure that they are providing their comments back to H C O G. And by the way, this is not the only time during the year that you need to make your comments. Feel free to give them to Stevie through H C O G at any time during the year. It's a very important process and this is how we design our transit system for the future. And thank you very much for having this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Richard. And also, I'm the H C O G representative, so I, if people say, send something to me, I also will make sure it gets to H C O G anyway. So we want to encourage it because we're pretty far up here and we, it's a long way to to get out. It's nice to have transportation go. Michael, would you like to add something?
Just to follow our councilman Tunnels' suggestion and and a way to get sort of numbers. I don't know what, I'm studying to get on to work, which is their lost city in this in Humboldt County. There's not some trade that is to take on some city, one square mile, very little people on the bus. And timers taking the bus for the world, both ways. And it's, yeah, it's a town, but it's doable. I transferred the road buzz all over San Francisco. Wow, it's you know, to Patrick's Point to have to have their harbor in a loop, even on the quest, just in a greater, said a turning around my church, turn our harbor. That's something you probably remember. Taking up that point, there's two more lines, two more lines, so it's a cost and I wish it on that. They sit here for quite a while, they could just take you on. They could probably take up to, you know, a few extra dollars again. But I would love to see them explore it or have them. I'd have to learn and see if there is that need to get it to work. And then that result, it can justify getting some subperiod period. I think the weekend was, he made it just thought about this a lot. And it seemed like a weekend, some of the dollars, something like that. People that wanted to go to the farmer's market in Arcata or do their shopping.
Thank you. Anything? Oh, Paul, please.
Off the top of my head, with the cost effective and feasible, I've noticed oftentimes there's not a whole lot of people riding a bus. So it would be cost effective to have maybe a smaller and electric vehicle. And I think that would inspire a whole lot more people to ride it because so many people are very concerned about the, of course, the climate and cutting down the N S G S. Maybe we can state grand
Paula, let me, I mean, first say, I was the first, I was the only person on the bus going to Arcata the other day. But as I was going south, and the bus was getting fuller and fuller and to the point where there was no space. and to the point where there was no space by the time I got to Arcata. So, but I do love the idea of having a cleaner fuel bus.
Maybe with smaller ones, you know, solve the frequency problem.
Right, right.
Stevie has some good ideas for you. Do you have anything else you want to add to this?
I, I really appreciate the discussion and I would certainly be happy to, to come back to the Trinidad City Council with my analysis of these points and, and looking at the projected ridership numbers. And there is a proposal through one of the HCOG plans, the Mobility On Demand Study, that looked at doing a sort of on-demand route from Trinidad to the McKinleyville Airport, where folks could use an app or call a ride when they needed it. And that would allow more frequency and potentially more, more mobility for people. So i- if that's something the, the council is interested in after going through this unmet transit needs process, I would be happy to prepare a presentation and discuss more transit solutions.
That would be terrific. I think we'd like that very much. So we will look forward to you getting back to us when you're ready.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. I think with that, we are, have discussed that. So we, do they take any motion, move, new or anything so we can move on to number two? The discussion decision regarding council unemployment to the Water Advisory Committee. Eli, you get your thing just?
Okay. So the Water Advisory Committee was established by resolution in 2021. The membership consists of two council members, one planning commissioner and a city, and then also two city of Trinidad water customers. Council member Cheryl Kelly took over the former position of Richard Pompous in January of 2022. And a current vacancy exists because of Dave Grover resigning in July. So we want to consider the second council member to be appointed to the Water Advisory Committee. Steve Langwick was asked if he wouldn't be interested since he wasn't going to be meeting. And he indicated that his schedule currently doesn't allow him to give the effort that he'd like to see on. So basically, we have two other council members.
I just, I'm not, I'm just, what, would you please tell us the meeting times, right? One of the meetings?
Well.
It's, it's tedious, so it's to be scheduled. We, Eli and I, and I've been trying, Anton, I've been trying to schedule a meeting over the past month, but we decided to wait for this meeting to, to get another council member. But, you know, it took, we're meeting every couple of months, it's, you know.
What times?
It was, it's usually about 5:00 PM.
Once a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and then we would poll the committee members to see what days you have work.
I'd be interested, okay, John? Great, thank you.
Thanks, we would be interested in having you.
That's terrific, yeah. It's important to me, I'm really, I really would like, that would be really terrific for you to be on there and bring us some back, back some information, it's gonna be very nice. All right, Eli, you all set for that?
Yeah, that sounds terrific. It was easier than the arm twisting, I thought we were gonna have.
I'll come back to you, Eli and Anton. I had a proposed agenda, so I'll send it to Jack and then I get something on books as soon as possible.
Say, do you want any community comment on this?
Who is the county commission member who's on the meeting? Who is Erin? And then the two at large customers?
Bryce Kenny and Dwight.
Anyone else? You can come up here though, if you want to do that.
I would like the council to consider expanding the Water Advisory Committee meeting and including someone in the sphere of influence since we're third of the city water customers.
Well, this may be two city, yeah, here it says city of Trinidad water customers, but I think the intent, what they mean here is that they're not city residents, they're water customers of the city. So those two positions, one of them could be someone who's not a resident of the city as long as they're a water customer of the city system.
Okay, well, I had expressed an interest in passing on this position to myself, so it's just.
Thank you. Any more comments? Unless, we're gonna, thank you for, Jack, for joining the group, the Water Committee. We're gonna look at the 2022 general election update. So Gabe, I think you've got some information for us.
Not too much to report, but I did want to keep the consistency going on this fun monthly ride we've been having since March. The election's coming up next month. And there's two updates, the, which one of them is the one that Eli mentioned tonight, City Manager Eli mentioned the, the candidate form. It's important, I don't need to go over that again, Eli covered it. There will be some publicity for it, it'll be on the city's website. It's, it's considered to be a council meeting since, at least that's how we took it, that the council wanted, we wanted to invite and make sure the council could all be there and they could speak perhaps if, if asked to without violating the Brown Act. So there will be a public notice going out regarding this meeting next week or this forum. And in the second, the second comment I just wanted to make, this is sort of just here we go before the election comes up, is the voter information guide has been mailed to all residents. I'm pretty sure everybody has gotten them. I heard from a few people that they didn't, but I'm guessing they were mailed by a week. So that has been sent out. It should have all the information and it's also up on our website. We posted all of the arguments for and against, including the candidate statements. On the homepage of our website, one click link, boom, everybody has access to it, even if you're not a city voter and you're just, you know, kind of watching city, city news. So, and the final thing is that for anyone who wants to cast their ballots in person or drop off their ballots in person, you know, I like to take my ballot to the county elections department and drop it off and not drop it off at A C R or wherever they look. But Trinidad Union School is the point. And I was kind of concerned about that this year because our council meeting happens to be on that same day. So that night on the eighth, if you're having, unless we change our thoughts on that, we're going to be having our council meeting in here and then the polling place is next door. But since everything's vote by, vote by mail, I don't expect too much traffic. And I had a couple of people ask why that's the case. Why do we vote at Trinidad School? We used to vote in the town hall. That may change in the next year or two, it might come back to the town hall. And that had to do with the fact that the school had a legitimate 88 parking space in their parking lot, where the city did not have one at the time they did the audit. The parking space was out on the front street and that didn't count. But as we all know, we just had some major improvements done to the city Trinity Street here from parking perspective. So when the county does its audit, who knows, the county election department does its audit of, of the facilities, which they host polling places at, that might change in the near future, but it's that Trinidad Union School bringing it. Dropping off the town. Is there any question?
Sure, I just have a quick question about the, since the all four candidates are here. It seems like a good time to ask those question. Are the League of Women voter questions given to the candidates before the session? Or are those surprise, are the questions?
Yeah, it's a surprise.
Okay.
They, they will be receiving the questions, they'll be sorting through the questions. And then also the day of the event, people can submit a card with the question. And again, the league would sort through them and then, and then pick which questions will be asked. So they, they're trying to get questions that go across the board and would concern all four candidates.
And then just if we could get the website updated for council.
Yes, you know, I'll just put this out there to the public now. I guess we had a website crash about five months ago. And it's been a little bit of a disaster, but there is information which I'm suddenly discovering because I guess it has to do with when they restored the website, not us city, but our consultant contractor that hosts the site for us, they use an older backup. So as you notice, some of the information dates back to 2016, which is something that I've been fishing through for the last couple of days. Mr. Morgan brought up some things, some, some, some important items, such as our council meetings are the second Wednesday of every month, which they're not anymore. So I encourage anyone to catch it. I'm fishing through every page as we speak, trying to, thanks for that.
Okay, yeah, there's a few other things about the city.
Yeah, if you see them, just shoot me a message and say, hey, fix this.
Jack, you have anything to add?
Any questions?
I do not. Okay. Anybody from the community, Mike?
We're in Canada, so Trinidad City Council. I just want to thank you because I really give them a lot this weekend. And I appreciate you guys throwing out your, and for the women voters. You're doing, you're still doing it right. Nice sign, I saw your sign, big guy. Some really great athletes, I mean, a great slang candidates, I'm very excited to give all of this room got our excellent spots and they all do a great job. So that being said, send me my forum answer, one more question we made of that. We get one minute. I can't do anything in a minute. So for Eli, it's gonna be yes, no, I don't know if I know later. But that's gonna be an interesting dynamic for us. I don't know if you've participated before. I'm really excited about it. I also, council dot US, I have the same information. The game is now for MVP, against MVP, Maribor bottle, Latinx symbol. I think those are really important, they're hard to find. The game puts them, today we don't have links for it. And it's still hard to find, I'm like, hey, we're late, please. There for now, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I, I hope we get the word out, this should be a, an interesting, interesting time. Let's get a lot of people here, say, come in and ask questions and find out a little bit more about the, about our council. So please get the word out, I'd like to see a, a nice show.
And, and Gabe is putting, showing on the screen the general election information is.
The website here, I know this, I can't remove this section over there on the right of the participants. But here, and it's right here. If anyone's interested, it's just one click. And then here's, here's where we're kind of archiving all this information.
Everybody. Thank you, and please, if you do get on the site and you find things, please let Gabe know because it looks like he's gonna be busy for a while. So let's take some more work up. All right. Okay, we've got a nice update, thanks, Gabe, and thanks for everybody for participating. I, we have completed this, we're gonna just go to future agenda items before we adjourn. So do we have any future agenda items that you're interested in?
I have a few, I think.
Okay.
But you can tell me, so, so one was I wanted to get an update on the water plant. And the, we could potentially do that at the Water Advisory Committee and/or, you know, but what I'd like to see, I've been getting a lot of feedback, I just reviewing, you know, what are the contractors doing? How is that handoff going, the budget associated with it? So I'll stop there, that's, that's topic number one, see what you guys think.
And I didn't want you, we've been asking some of the same things to get that on. Half a cent, but I think we shortened this with Steve not here. So that, that will come up next month probably.
On the city council and then?
Yeah, we, I've been trying to put some information, you know, in the staff report, which I had last month. And then I didn't have anything new to record, but I will include it next month.
Okay, and then maybe we'll do a deep dive. Maybe we'll do a deep dive at the Water Advisory Committee as well. The second topic I have is, is a little bit more potentially esoteric, but I think, I think it's various discussion. And that's, I've been thinking a lot about the oversight role of the city council as it pertains to things like grant spending and it pertains to water plant management and even as it, as it relates to, you know, having an emergency contact, for example, for, you know, we have an earthquake or tsunami or what have you. What's the, the city council's responsibility? So I guess it's a roles and responsibilities discussion. City council members and, and the city manager. So what's the city manager's responsibility? What are our individual and collective responsibilities? So because it's, it's, when I, I know when I'm getting questions about who's looking deeply at, you know, budget and expenditures at water plant management, at, you know, again, now that's a given, but, you know, what happens in an emergency, who's responsible, who's the go-to person? And it's not super clear to me right now, so it's a little bit more of a strategy discussion or a planning discussion, but I think we need to think about getting that on the agenda. I do want to talk about the website at some point. I think Gabe is doing a smashing job with the resources he has. But it's been, I've been collecting feedback from the community for three years now that the website and the communications capabilities that we have with the community are not kind of up to par. So I think we need to kind of take a go hard look at that. Maybe we're not devoting resources to it, IT-wise, right? So that's my theory. So you can tell I came back from summer vacation.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Jack, you have anything? Uh, not at this time, okay? I certainly agree with what we're hearing about the website, so that would be nice. I just, just saying, like, yeah, you're gonna be next. And I did talk about the water, looking at the new tank, some other water issues. So we did call about that and we'll be getting more information soon, but that should come up as well. So thank you. Mr. Morgan, go ahead.
Just a real quick follow-up to Charles, in terms of the services. You can talk to Tom, you didn't have another fire department, we've got all the famous stuff. Starting getting a place that appears now here. Fire department, ours is actually pretty, SOPs, standard operating procedures, got a counter fire right there. So that's a good place to develop. If you want, I mean, first, Gabe is one of those too. Eli's not here very often, you may as well, you know, to hear, that's our go-to. Eli will be on the road.
Thank you. Is, is there anybody in the community, please?
Hi, Erin, if you have a resident, and to be clear, I'm speaking as a resident. So like, just two suggested agenda items for the future. One I brought up in the past, actually both, I think, kind of traffic calming measures on surface streets in town. Tour season is over, we can all reassigned leave. But school season's open again now and a lot of traffic running around. So I think there's an opportunity for the collective streets and the surface streets to have some traffic calming measures. Personal opinion, I've heard raised in the past about emergency vehicle access as someone that's for a living, we'll get where we need to go. That's, that to me is kind of like a, a false argument. So I'd just like to see that brought back and then taken where it needs to go within the staff or planning commission. The second issue is I'm pleased to see an increase in law enforcement presence in town. It seems to be kind of point source. But I'd like to challenge the council with some oversight on our contractor services with the Sheriff's Department. We pay, I think it's $126,000 a year. I think I saw my contract for services today. And the documents a little bit vague as far as what we're supposed to get for, what routine control looks like, those types of things. So just a good opportunity for us to kind of better understand what we should be getting and then see if we're getting that, if not, go to the divisions that are in agreement with the city council. We're supposed to be some focus that can be with them. So that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Yes, Paula, go ahead.
Like to see a discussion locating the position of the city council members.
I can respond to that briefly. With the election coming up, the city ordinance requires that with each election, general election every two years, the council have that discussion and determine amongst themselves who the mayor will be for the next two-year period. Certainly, it can, we always have it on the agenda as a selection of mayor, so the public has an opportunity to. Certainly, it can, we always have it on the agenda as a selection of mayor, so the public has an opportunity to chime in. But there's no limitation on. One person who may be the mayor at this two-year period to continue. It's up to the full council to to decide.
And that system can change. Uh, perhaps two years, one year or you can especially change.
It's an ordinance. But it can, any ordinance can be changed.
Thank you. I am, anybody, is there anyone else who has any comments? I think we've covered everything, so with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.